Just testing the audio. Testing the audio.
Hello, everyone. My sincere apologies for late. I hope you all have a good evening. We have a couple of board members who are not here. Trustee Palma and trustee Danueva Marsh could not make it this evening. But we're gonna get started first by having the Pledge of Allegiance. I just haven't chosen anyone to lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, do you have any suggestion? Oh, please, that's great. A student would like to do it? Oh, that would be incredible. Want to lead us through the Pledge of Allegiance? That would be even better. I love the initiative. Come on.
I love it.
That's great. No, you think over there is fine. Do you want to lead us?
I'll count to three and then go for it. Ready?
One, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. That was the best one I've had since I've Yeah, it's gorgeous. Excellent. Excellent. Yes. All right, thank you very much. Now is the time to make announcement of the reportable flow sessions items. So I am going to start, please bear with me. All right. Consideration of student confidential matter of an interdistrict transfer case 24256. That's elementary school district. The board decided to reject the staff, no, I'm sorry, to uphold the staff recommendation to deny the transfer request for student case 24256. The vote was as follows. It was moved by trustee Kerner and second by trustee Martin. All those in favor were trustee Martel, Martin, and Kerner, absent trustee Palma and trustee Danueva Marsh. Consideration of confidential student matter interdistrict transfer case 24257. The board decided to reject the staff recommendation to deny the transfer request for student case 24257. The vote was as follows. It was moved by trustee Kerner and second by trustee Martel. I mean, second by trustee Martin. All those in votes, yes, with Kerner, Martin, and Martel, and absent, we have trustee Palma and trustee Danueva Marsh. For the third and last case, consideration of confidential student matter interdistrict transfer case 24258 and case 24259. The board decided to reject the staff recommendation to deny the transfer request for student case 24258 and 24259. The vote was as follows. Moved by trustee Martin, second by trustee Kerner. Yes, trustee Martel, Martin, and Kerner, and absent trustee Palma and trustee Danueva Marsh. Thank you very much. All right. I just want to also say, you know, these are all cases that are very difficult. And I want to thank the staff and everyone involved trying to get resolution for some of these cases. So I'm gratitude to to all of you and the families as well. All right. I will need motion to approve the agenda. I'd like to approve the agenda.
I second the motion.
To move by trustee Martin and second by trustee Kerner. And you're gonna have to get used to this rhythm because this is gonna be your, we are only three this All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone abstentions? If none, that motion passes. All right, the first item this evening. And before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that we have translation. If you need translation to Spanish, we have it today. Oh, perfect. If you need translation in Spanish, please raise your hand on Zoom, right Christina? Okay. All right, the first one is going to be approving a resolution 24258, recognizing September 2024 as Student Awareness Month. Very excited about this. And who do we have superintendent?
We have our Director of Student Services, Houston.
Welcome.
Good evening. So this resolution is for September being Attendance Awareness Month. So we know as a district, we have been looking at our attendance numbers over the last few years. We have been making some improvements, but we're also sending out messages to families about really limiting their absences to illnesses, vomiting, fevers, that sort of thing. Making sure they're scheduling doctor's appointments outside of the school day and that they're really engaging with the school community. Meanwhile, the site, the schools are making every effort to continue all their work to engage the students in activities throughout the school days. They're really excited to be a part of the school and everything that they're learning in class. Because we know that chronic absenteeism does lead to academic difficulties down the road and that some patterns that are set in early years could end up really spiraling for the student as they get older. So we try to address it as early as possible. So this month and this year, the district is putting forward a district-wide attendance campaign. Every day counts. Attendance matters. Every one of our schools is talking about it. We're all coming up with incentives together at each school site as well as our principals putting the word out to families. So also improving all of our attendance policies around our independent study contracts, for example, and making sure that families are always notifying the school if they will be out. And really just starting and improving this communication from day one, especially in our TK and K families. So they know this is a very important thing to the benefit of their child.
Thank you very much.
I hope that you approve this.
Thank you. Do any have any comments or questions from the trustees?
No questions. Thank you.
I was gonna say I'm super excited about this because as we heard about it in our budget last year, that attendance is really important and it brings back the joy in our classrooms. So thank you for bringing this forward.
And budget for our schools. Thank you so much. So can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved by trustee Kerner, second by trustee Martin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Adoption of resolution 258, recognizing September 2024 as Student Awareness Month. As passed. Thank you very much, Susan. All right, we have another resolution this evening. 24259 about Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month of September 2024. I presume you have a second percent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this month, September is Suicide Prevention Month. As you remember, back in May, we had, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So we start the school year by educating our, all of our educators, all of our staff on school campuses about the importance of knowing the signs, knowing when someone's struggling, knowing how to communicate and feeling comfortable to communicate and really knowing what that procedure and policy is in that particular school in case someone really does need help. So we start out the school year with staff trainings. All of our counselors and our wellness staff present in our faculty meetings so that our staff really understands what is behind this and really how to support students. There's also a lot of education that goes out upfront in the beginning of the year for students. So they know that they can come to their school counselor. They know they can do a brain break in the wellness center if they need it. And and really just so they know the signs in their friends as well. If something comes up for a friend, make sure you get help for them and and know and know how to help. So you're also probably also aware, a couple of years ago, the the nation put out a new suicide crisis lifeline called 988. So if if anyone is in a crisis, they can just dial those three digits and get help on the other end. It really has been a help for many, many families and it really still is unfortunately an epidemic in our society. So I hope that you pass this resolution.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from the board?
Thank you for bringing this forward. It is a very important issue, especially with all the stress can end up on the kids. So I appreciate this coming forward as one of the initiatives.
I echo my colleague's sentiments. Yes, thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you so much, Susan. One thing, I just saw a poster was sponsored by Marin County Office of Health and Human Services. I think it said that three out of four that either attempt suicide are actually men. So I feel like that demographic is also important that we recognize and support. I think a lot of that demographic is being affected by higher suicide rates. I'm not, I'm not sure, attempts, attempts, I think girls are affected definitely.
They do say that that is more often happening with men and also students who may be LGBTQ plus, you know, really questioning and unsure
For sure.
really going through a lot and maybe not getting the resources. So just always making sure that we're looking out for those signs.
Yes, for sure. Thank you so much. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved by trustee Kerner, second by trustee Martin. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. That motion passes and the resolution is approved. Thank you so much for presenting today.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the time when we have announcements from our trustees and all the folks like the superintendent and other student board members, which we still don't have, right? And our labor partners. So let's start with our trustees. Trustee Kerner, do you have an update for the board?
I do have an update. So I had a productive meeting this week with Superintendent Geisels. During this, we discussed a request from the union to provide more opportunities for direct interaction with the board members. I'm available to schedule time with the unions to facilitate these important conversations, ensuring that we maintain an open and effective dialogue. The best way for for me to participate in that, and I'll work with Carmen on this as well, is to be able to open up my calendar for slots and be able to fit this in during the week. And I definitely have some time for that. I'll probably designate a couple of days where I could put in those blocks of time. This also follows up to valuable feedback we got from the teachers. I mentioned some of this in our last meeting. But I learned that there's a dire suspend for the board members to spend more time in the classroom sessions, like a full session or part of a session versus just doing walkthroughs. So like I just mentioned before, I'm gonna work with Superintendent Geisels to, it's probably starting in Terre Linda to set up some times where I can actually spend more time in a classroom, really understand what's going on there and better support the teachers and the students from having that understanding. So that will be in the coming weeks and months to be able to do something like that. Additionally, I recently joined some of the presentations offered through the TL newsletter that focus on college admissions and services. This experience can spark a renewed interest in the work being done by our high school counselors and admissions team. I believe it's important to highlight their proactive efforts in reaching our students at all levels. So I'm eager to explore how we can share these successes more broadly with the community. So to that end, I I propose we consider further featuring these outreach goals and progress and upcoming board meetings. This will not only showcase their dedication, but also ensure that we're collectively tracking, supporting that vital work. So that's my update for for this session. And I look forward to hearing from the rest of the trustees as well.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you.
So Vice President Martin, do you have updates to share with?
I just wanted to say thanks to all the teachers and administrators. Back to school, here we are. I know my daughters are so excited to be back in fifth grade. And thanks to all the hard work and the construction for everyone that worked over the summer. And and I'm gonna wish everyone good luck on open house this week. So that's what I have.
That's right. Thank you so much, trustee Martin. I have the opportunity to be in the, how would you call it, ceremony or an event? A welcome back, a welcome back event that we had in Terre Linda. And I want to congratulate the staff and everyone that made a big effort to put this together. The superintendent, I'm very excited that you were there, able to talk to different teachers, the new teachers. That was excellent to see all the new teachers that we're now gonna be having joining That was excellent to see all the new teachers that we're now gonna be having joining our 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 teacher cohort. That was uh great to see. Um, it was a little contention of who was gonna win the best performance throughout the evening. So the so the public knows um every site, every school makes a little performance as we're introducing them and then we get to pick, which was more fun. It was very hard. I don't even think I voted. I was just like, I'm gonna let this to all the folks because they were all excellent. So um, so that was, that was, that was a lot of fun. Um, and I saw a lot of great spirit and people excited to start the new year. Thank you for everyone who put some time and effort to to put this together and for everyone who showed up. Uh, we also had a couple of um, we have one student who showed up to to speak, one of our, King Morales, um, our former student trustee. So that was um great to see as well. So thank you for inviting her, whoever had the idea. Thank you very much. Um, and also one of our new teachers also spoke and addressed the the public. That was, that was excellent. Thank you. Um, tomorrow, I'm gonna be um opening a short school venue, so I'm excited about that. And I also wanna say and reiterate again, uh my gratitude to all the families and everyone who has in invested time and effort to make sure we have the facilities that we that we want for our students and the families that that support um all of that. And everyone that put it together. Uh, tomorrow, I'll be there opening um the school. Thank you so much. All right. Um, Superintendent, do you have any updates that you wanna share?
Almost exactly what you said. It was a great start to the school year. I am so grateful for all of the efforts of our staff who worked so hard to prepare for the new year, our teachers, our classified staff, our construction folks, everyone. Um, and the welcoming was great at TL. You know, thank you to Morgan and to Brianna and to our teacher and Giselle for speaking. And um, we did fairly pick those spirited souls.
That was hard. That was hard.
And we are very excited about the ribbon cutting ceremony at Short's. If you have some time, please come. Um, Davidson's Middle School is seven period schedules on its way, so we're we're really excited about that. And you know, we've launched our second cohort of the Teacher Renency Program this year. Um, as a result of the first cohort cohort, we have nine new teachers that are leading their classrooms, uh our own classrooms in San Rafael. So um, looking forward to spending time at the school sites and and getting uh more connections in our school community. So thank you and again, Happy New Year.
That's great. All right. Getting caught up in time. So I would love to hear from our labor partners. Uh, do we have CSCA online? All right.
We can ask just to be sure, but um if CSCA is online, if they would raise their hand, say no.
Um, SRTA?
I'm here.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. One of the trustees, we're awaiting our student trustees. Um, for everyone online, I am Brianna Padilla, President of Santa Fel Teachers Association with our Early Intervention Through Eighth Grade Educators. Um, and this past week was full of so much joy around all the school sites, the annual welcome staff, welcome back staff event that you all mentioned at Terre Linda and on the first day of school. Uh, the welcome back event is always a great opportunity for all of us to be able to see stuff that we don't necessarily get to see on a day-to-day basis, um, to be able to reconnect with those people um across sites, to be able to see board members there um out in the Santa Fel City Schools community and to hear from the variety of speakers that um include those students. It's especially energizing and exciting to hear from them each year. Um, we'd also like to thank uh Superintendent Diaz Geisels for visiting school sites on the first day of school. Um, that's something that is very special to our educators. Uh, seeing all of the hustle and bustle, so to speak, um, is always super powerful um and is a powerful gesture to all of our educators um at every school site. Um, on top of the daily behind-the-scenes work that we know that's happening, but um is also a heavy lift. Uh, so this week, uh, Santa Fel Teachers Association educators are hosting back-to-school night events um and look forward to seeing and meeting uh families, engaging with all of them. And we hope to see district staff um and board members out at those uh events as well. Uh, and tomorrow at the Early Learning Center ribbon cutting ceremony. So I'll see you all there and that's it for us.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. SRTA? Yes, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, for anyone who by chance doesn't know me, I'm Morgan Agnew, President of the Santa Fel Federation of Teachers, representing certificated teachers in the high school district. Um, I wanna thank uh Mark for your comments just a moment ago. Uh, Trustee, Trustee Kerner, excuse me. Um, I really appreciate you coming to the school sites and getting to know our educators better. And I do think that, you know, given a set amount of time, longer time in fewer classrooms gives you a better approximation of the student experience, although it is always nice. I know you like to tour around, see a lot of rooms, but I think it's good to spend a lot of time in one room. So thank you for that. Uh, thank you, Trustee March Aldau, for attending our back-to-school. And yes, we know that by the Brown Act, no more than two of you can show up at one time. So we don't hold it against the rest of you who weren't able to make it. But we do appreciate you and Trustee Dania Marsh for uh being there. Um, and thank you too. Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it was our construction partner who played, paid for the refreshments at that event.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Uh, that was a a very welcome and much appreciated fastest way to a teacher's heart, right there. My apologies for not attending any of the prior meetings uh this school year. Um, as you can probably imagine, it's a little busy uh this time of year. Uh, but just to let you know, going forward, my goal is to attend the first board meeting of each month to give the SRT report with other SRT officers filling in the remaining time so you can see, hear, hear from a variety of our voices and uh get to know a few more of us up here. Um, I wanna use tonight's report to say thank you to the district for two uh specific initiatives that are already rolling along. Uh, first, I wanna say thank you to Kristi Novak for her work on a comprehensive district policy around generative AI. Uh, this is a significant undertaking because whatever policy we adopt, someone will violate. That someone will then be disciplined and may well appeal their discipline and end up before this board, quite possibly with a heart-wrenching story about being denied a college admission. This board will need to stand behind its generative AI policy one hundred percent. In order to do that, we need a policy that is crafted with input from all stakeholders, including general ed teachers, sped teachers, counselors, administrators, parents, and students, to name just a few. This can't just be your policy. It has to be all of our policy so it can stand up to the inevitable challenges that will come. Second, I wanna thank our district inside administration for the renewed push to improve attendance, which you heard about just a moment ago. Um, obviously, students need to be in class in order to learn. Here's a sobering fact. If a student misses just one day of school every three weeks, by the time they graduate high school, they have missed an entire year of their education. But the effects of chronic absenteeism go far beyond just the absent students themselves. It is disruptive to the learning environment for all students when their classmates are not consistently present or not consistently on time. And of course, both districts are now under state funding. So chronically absent students cost the district millions and that lost revenue forces cuts that affect not just the chronically absent students, but everybody. So thank you for your focus on this incredibly important topic this year. Um, thank you for recognizing those two important issues. We look forward to working together and together I think we can make some real progress on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you for uh both uh labor partners were um here this evening. Uh, you should know, I think you were not here the first uh day that we came back, but we know the things that we were really happy about signing of the contracts that we approved on the first session. So we wanna recognize all the work that uh labor partners did. Um, there were three. So, well, we approved just two, but anyway. So thank you for for those um for negotiating with the with the with the staff and we really, I'm glad that we get to start the new year. We're all very happy that we get to start a new year with those contracts approved by the board on our first day. Um, and we also talked a little bit about technology. Um, so I can wait to, we can get to uh some updates about that. So we also um really had a lot of interest around both things, the AI and also the cell phone usage. And the board also brought up those things to um to the superintendent as well. So you should know that the board is also interested and we talked about it the first day. We all talked about it.
And staff is meeting those pop topics in the next, within the next few weeks.
No, I'm I'm excited to know that there's there's initiatives on this. So this is great. All right. Let's move on. All right. Now it's the time when we hear from the public uh for non-agendized items. So everything that is not on the agenda, the public can come in and speak now and tell us their thoughts.
Those on Zoom, can you use the raise hand feature? A moment.
All right.
Say no.
All right, thank you, Christina. All right. Now we're gonna move on to approval.
We had one.
We have one? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Um, the the name is Dad.
All right.
Hi, this is Mom and Dad. Uh, my name's Phoebe Reyes. I'm a mom at Sun Valley School. And I think I raised this last year and somebody lovingly put together, um, actually, Ms. Evans put together a meeting with the cafeteria, the head of the cafeteria. Um, I'm forgetting his name. He has a very hard job. He does a great job. But um just to put it out there that our kids' lunches are in wrapped in plastic and then heated. Not every meal, but like pizza, some burritos, certain things. And I think we could all agree that food heated in plastic is just not um something that uh is proven to be very healthy. So I'm just raising the concern to put the word out there so that we can all put it on our agenda that like maybe that's something we could change this year um to try to find a an alternative. Because I know the kids love pizza and I know we've had to deal with all the COVID issues, but like there is a better way and it's a small change that we could make. And I'm just gonna put that out there and I appreciate you guys listening. Thank you.
Um, on the contrary, thank you for being here and raising these issues. Thank you so much. All right. Um, yeah, we can look into this at some point, discuss. Thank you so much. All right. Uh, do now have a motion now to approve the consent agenda unless there are any items that one of my colleagues would like to pull for further discussion? Or questions?
I don't have anything to pull.
All right. So do I have a motion?
I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved by Trustee uh Martin, Vice President Martin.
I second the motion.
Seconded by Trustee Kerner. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Attention? No, say nothing. On that motion passes and we approve the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, so let's start with the staff reports. Thank you for being here. So we're gonna hear from our capital facilities program and we will have a construction update. Can't wait to hear more.
There are two handouts coming. We'll start with the one with the red.
Take one.
First off, thank you so much for having me tonight. It's nice to see you.
Uh, welcome back after summer.
Hi, I hope you are well rested. Uh, I am not. And I would like to take an opportunity uh to also thank, as all many have, VanPelt Construction Services for sponsoring the Welcome Back Meal. Um, and they also are sponsoring tomorrow's ribbon cutting at at Short uh
That's great.
Early Learning Center. Uh, and with me tonight, I have Bill Savage and Kathy Lamas from VanPelt Construction Services. And also with us tonight, we have Samina Saudi, our Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and John Graffini, the Vice Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. And uh, they're here to see and present as well, but they're here to see what I have to say tonight. Um, we have done a lot of work. So let's look at the red one first, the elementary school.
Okay.
If you'll see at the top of your box, May thirteenth, uh, this board approved updating the income, saying that we have a selling our bonds of one hundred and fifty-two, adding interest, some bond funds that have moved in from Measure A and other local developer fees for a total of one hundred and sixty million, seven, twenty-three, two, eighty-seven. So the next set, the next square is projects in construction. These are all the projects that we were working on this summer and are gonna continue through the school year. So let's just start Coleman and you'll see that we have a transitional kindergarten, extended learning opportunity center. Uh, and that will continue construction through May of twenty twenty-five. And the way it's going, it could be July. Um, we have uh, this is a snapshot in time. And we're showing encumbered amounts and then we're showing July bill to date. We've had more billing since, but we had to make a snapshot. Just, this is a, we're just, as a data point to show you what's all going on and what's in planning for the future. At Glenwood Elementary, uh, we have a transitional kindergarten, which is very much on track. Uh, we've had no soils issues. We've, it's, we've, we feel it's a real date, February twenty twenty-five. And you can see that there is six million dollars uh encumbered, but billing to date only seven, forty-eight. Playground, Phase One Playground, September twenty twenty-five. Uh, the playground went in, uh, and it went in with an error. So part of the playground was taken out uh over the weekend. And we're looking for a solution that'll be resolved by the end of the month. Uh, one of the slides was offset and and rather than leave up a slide with just caution tape on it, we felt it was better to remove it and save off the play structure. Totally usable by kids and they're really excited. You know, your kids are very excited. Actually, fifth graders, I don't think are allowed.
Yeah, they're not. They're not allowed.
The Short School Early Learning Center, we opened Short School. We're very excited about that.
Yay.
And I do this a lot where I'm uh my, personally, I get down into the problems and and all the opportunities and challenges in front of me. And I have my my boss, Bob, who says, uh, remember to celebrate successes. And and I just wanna say that everyone in our department now wears deputy badges because we have been deputized by the Deputy Superintendent. Uh, we're on his posse, so. But Short School, we have a few more of pieces to pick up. Uh, we're not completely done, uh, but it is operational and occupied. The front gate needs to be replaced. It's a temporary gate. Sun Valley Elementary School, the Transitional Kindergarten, uh, May twenty twenty-five. Again, you can see the budget numbers. Uh, Venetia Valley Middle School Courtyard. We're hoping September holds for a completion date. Transitional Kindergarten looks to be on track. Uh, the restroom building is occupied. The restroom building is completed and we have some landscape to do around it, but the kids are using the toilets and they're excited. At Davidson Middle School, uh, the NPR, as you may have heard, we've had some delays with uh CGS, the and as well as some design issues. Uh, DSA, uh, CGS, California Geological Survey, uh, DSA, the Division of the State Architect, are reviewing our documents and uh, increment one, we we broke our projects into increments because it's easier to get the site work approved. So that work is ongoing, but the building looks to be approved probably October. So there may be a few weeks where there's less work to do on the site. Soon as we get approval, we'll start. And in design, we have Bahia Vista Transitional Kindergarten, Coleman Elementary School, uh, K Play and Site Work, Davidson Middle School Modernizations, uh, Glenwood Elementary School Fire Alarm Upgrades and the Multipurpose Building, uh, San Pedro, the Fire Alarms and Playfield Upgrades, Sun Valley Elementary, um, modernization, which is basically HVAC and Fire Alarm and Venetia Valley, a building GNH, a complete gut and remodel. I wanted to point out that of the hundred and sixty million in the first box, we have thirty-six million under construction. And we have thirty-four million in uh design. Uh, this week, we sold bonds, uh, forty-five
Yeah.
uh, million dollars. We had estimated doing forty, but by bringing that money forward, we're able to get more work done faster. And the sooner we get work done, the less costly it is. We're not seeing the escalation. So moving on to the next projects, it's the high school.
Begin.
This is a snapshot of construction costs. So the project funds, as you can see at the top, approved in May uh at the end of the year, is two hundred and twenty-four million, three hundred and eighty-two, four, thirty-eight. Medrone High School, we have finished. Uh, the HVAC has been improved and completed. I walked into that site and um the front desk said they're so excited that they got their own clock bell system. And I said, well, thank you so much. Then I turned to my guys and I said, did we give them a new clock bell system? Like I'm, what happened was, in our design, we separated out Medrone so that they have their own ability to program their own bells. And it's great. And it's, it has changed their operation and they're very excited about it. And I must say, it's something that happened to me. Uh, when people ask me questions, there's so much going on, I have to say, let me find out. Uh, and the good news is, they were happy about it. So I was very excited. So. Santa Fel High School Aquatic Center. Wow, there's a lot of work at the Aquatic Center and it's gonna continue on. It's a forty-one million dollar uh project currently. The security gate fences are ongoing through April. Uh, the front posts arrived uh for the front gate and they were wrong. Uh, so
Oh, no.
Yes, we were only able to get them installed before school opened. So we have temporary uh walkways in place and we're working on those to get them up. Uh, the temporary housing, which is referred to as Dogtown, uh, is being used for PE uh during this transition where we're modernizing the gymnasium. And then it'll be used as temporary housing for the Visual and Performing Arts Building as we demolish that. So we did not So we did not just build a PE temporary structure. We built a interim housing that can support any project that we're doing at the site moving forward. At the main building, we have the fire alarm modernization, the wellness. I'm sorry, I moved on to Terlinda. My apologies. We have the modernization at ADS, CLA and TE that are moving forward with fire alarm. And there are also the commons AV install. All the infrastructure is in place, but the custom wall mounted 110 inch LED panel has been ordered and we expect that to be installed before Christmas of this year. That way, in the commons, they're able to have presentations that the entire room can see and hear. We did multiple studies using televisions and it just, it wasn't, you couldn't read or you couldn't hear. Terlinda High School, the aquatic center, again, 37 million. The main building, we're also doing modernization wellness center and the special ed toilets. We have, those toilets are also taking care of the district office toilets. So we anticipate having that online mid-October. It says September here, but that changed like since I typed this, so it looks to be mid-October. The ceramics courtyard is complete and occupied. Oh, the ceramics building, I apologize. So ceramics courtyard, we have everything in place for the courtyard, but the wood dust shop collector arrives in two weeks and gets installed. We have ADA parking. When you, when you add a, a large device that sucks dust out of a building, you have to make room for it. And making room for it to change for the ADA spaces we're going. And to changing the ADA space to change the grading for, we're chasing it, but we're gonna get it done. Tennis courts resurfaced, they are complete. Track resurfaced, just finished Friday of this week. The district office restroom renovations, again, we say end of September, could be mid-October. In design, we have the Sanford High School, the LA Building HVAC Project. Very good, very good. The TE Building Modernization, the VAPA Building Project and the STEAM CTE Conversion Project. At the Terlinda High School, we've got a Phase 2 Track Stadium Improvements. Currently, if you're a shot putter, you have to go up into the top of the hill to throw a shot put. You leave the stadium so your parents can't choose between watching you or your other child. Like, one of you has to go watch shot put, one of them wants to watch high jump. So we're moving the shot put and the long jump down onto the track in the following summer so that all team members can participate equally. We're also going to be modernizing the roof and student staff restrooms. Okay, good man. There it is. That's what I was looking for. And then we have district office Phase 2. There's a lot.
Yes.
Right, I was trying to give you a snapshot of some of the challenges we're having and what's going on. But at the same time, we have some successes, so. Again, Deputy Markucci has said to me many times, don't forget to celebrate the success. So over the weekend, we built a video, some of our success, it's 4 minutes 29 seconds. I can get your popcorn if you need it. And if you'll go ahead and play that.
Can you really?
Yes, I can.
That's so great.
I won't say a word during it.
We need a digital wall for this.
There you go. And so our children feel seen, heard and loved. And our staff feel like they're being treated like professionals.
Yeah, it makes you want to show up. It's, it's very good.
No, I was just gonna say thank you so much to you and the team. And I love that you set a place that we want to, kids want to belong in their classrooms, in their schools, looking to look nice. Thank you for that and teachers, and it just creates that warm environment. So I know my kids are super excited and all the students and parents are excited about it. So thank you for all your hard work. And it's not done yet, so yes.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, Tim. I'm trying to digest some of these numbers and see where we're at in terms of timeline. So can you give me a little bit of a high level? Like, there's some things that are still gonna be, there are, they're not gonna be ready yet. So I'm just highlighting some of the things that I see here. For example, Davidson, which I think it's in, you know, we, I think I talked to, I can't remember who I talked to about this, like, you know, just doing a little bit of that refresh with paint or things like that goes a long way. So, but I know you're also doing some, some other things that are to be determined or for February 2026. So in Davidson School specifically, I'm a little, I'm not clear of some of the, because you have, don't be doing work on Davidson too, right? I mean, I just don't see it here.
We have nine and a half million dollars in to do modernization to Davidson that we're in design for. The reason we say TBD is we're not sure when we'll be able to start if design hasn't started yet.
Okay.
We'd love to say 2025, but our reality is we don't have a pencil and a paper yet. So next summer is probably not likely. But we need to do building envelope before we paint windows, doors, HVAC, and then paint.
Yeah, because I was gonna ask a little bit about that. Davidson, do you need to do, there's some things that are not being done at Davidson because we're waiting for some of these plans? Or did we do anything in the summer at Davidson?
What we did at Davidson this summer was a new gas line. And to get ready, we moved some HVAC to get ready to build the NPR and that's the extent of the work that got done this summer. We're not doing demolition and site prep.
Okay.
Waiting for the state to approve the buildings and then we can go vertical.
Okay.
We thought we'd have more done this summer than we had done.
Okay, thank, thank you. I appreciate you.
An extensive amount of work, you know, normally it takes 200, 180 days to get through CGS. Davidson took 227.
Oh my gosh.
Forty-seven days, that's my summer.
Yeah, completely, completely. I can, I can see why this is very, so I appreciate you highlighting that because that's kind of what I wanted to be. There's definitely that environmental process that really put us back quite a bit, even though, but what I wanted to highlight and to tell the public too and everyone here that we do want to make those improvements in every side. Right? So I, I'm just resurfacing so people know that we're paying attention to Davidson. That's a school that we, it's very important. It's the largest, but an elementary, obviously, right? But it's a very large school and I think we need to pay attention to the infrastructure there as well.
Absolutely.
So, okay, do we do any things from an aesthetic perspective?
So I think one, one thing that's important to understand with any bond work is the, the projects are planned out over multiple years and phased in, in concert with the selling of the
That's true.
three to four series of bonds where the, you know, we just sold $45 million worth of bonds, which was, was our second series, so that now we have cash flow coming in to start moving on to the next phases. So Davidson, the number one piece was let's get this, this sort of keystone of the campus, this multipurpose room.
That makes total sense.
And then we absolutely will be addressing the aesthetic needs at that school for sure.
And I just want to say this is about construction, not overall cost.
No, overall, yeah.
Because I'm showing that you sold 40, thank you for selling 40 million. But there's 34 million of construction already in design for that 25.
Wow.
Not to mention program management costs and insurance costs and lawyers costs are on top of that.
Well, building in California is quite frankly incredibly frustrating, I gotta say. And the schools also pay the price for things that we have no control over.
You know what I can say though is that our staff and our neighbors have been, and the city have been great, right? This has been, I, I worked in, this is my third program.
That's good.
This is the most cooperative group of people I've ever had.
That's so great. The successes, the positive.
Except for Bob.
But I'm so glad that Bob asked you to highlight that because highlighting the partnerships, highlighting the work of the staff, that's also very important. So thank you. Alright, so the other question around elementary, oh, I'm sorry, around high school that I had was can you tell me a little bit about the talent of the pool for Terlinda, the aquatic center? That will be April, I know the aquatic center is very important to our community, so that's why I'm highlighting that, right? So we're talking about maybe completion in April 2026?
Yeah, that has not slipped yet.
Okay.
I did have a discussion today that the provider of the ticket booth and toilet buildings
Alright.
were having some issues with, so that may delay some of that work, but. It, this is a snapshot.
It's a snapshot.
Always morphing and all, it's a, it's a live document. It's already changed since I printed it.
Yeah, I'm sure. It's just that we, you know, if we hear questions from the community sometimes, it's, it's good too for me to hear what's happening.
And, and I think that maybe in a future presentation, I give you the five-year plan. With, so you can see what it is that is in, in, in the hopper. Because one of the things that we've worked with, with the Strategic Facility Committee, which the two of these are on, is prioritizing.
Yeah.
Sometimes a project moves up as, like, we had not planned to do a field as soon as we're doing it at San Pedro. But we were able to find that money so that project's moving forward for next summer.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions, Tim. Thank you so much. I wonder if the public, any members of the public want to speak or on Zoom have any questions?
Those on Zoom, can you raise hand features? Sign that.
So this item was just a staff report. Shouldn't or anything to approve. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Yeah, great, great effort and thanks for everybody too who have been involved in this. Alright, we also have another Capital Facilities Program Discussion Update, which is the 2022-2023 Annual Report from Measure A and B 1 from 2015, wow, and the Measures B 2 and C from 2022, and the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Good morning, Superintendent, President and the other Board of Trustees. My name is Samina Saudi. I am the Chair of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'm also a, I just completed my third year on the executive work for Sun Valley PTO. I serve on the Sanfordville Planning Commission. And most importantly, I am the parent of a fourth grader at Sun Valley and a sixth grader at Davidson. So, you know, I, I think, you know, through all the different spheres of what I do, it's really impressive to see all the work that Bob and Tim and Phil and, you know, everyone's done to make this happen. It's pretty impressive. So I'm here to provide our annual report. And that's a report on last year, so the 22-23 spending. So it takes a while for them to get the audit done and then, you know, it gets published, we review it, you know, and then it goes forward to you. So that is for bond measures A and B 1, which is from 2015, and bond measures B 2 and C from 2022. The report that you have includes a statement indicating that Sanfordville City Schools is compliant with Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution. And it also includes our activities from that year. I want to thank Tim, who's done an incredible amount of work with a smile and energy, more energy than I think. I don't have that much energy. Under the leadership of Bob Mercucci, who's, has been there steadily and has been taking everyone's questions and concerns very seriously, as well as Bill Savage and Phyllis, who from VanPelt Construction Services. You know, the team together, everyone's foresight, their skill, really just their hard work has allowed us to really maximize the funds that we have available. And also just, you know, we've been able to create some amazing projects. Oh my gosh, I thought I had my thing on.
I love it though. The Harry Potter?
Yeah, oh, my, my.
I could tell, I could tell.
And, you know, they've been able to do all this planning and also be strategic about when to sell bonds and stay on top of all these projects, which is pretty incredible to see. The talent and creativity that went to the process has saved the district millions of dollars and has resulted in exceptional work. So I really, really am grateful that we have people like this in our district, making sure that this work is getting done well. To provide some background for those unfamiliar Um, to provide some background for those unfamiliar with the Citizen Bond Oversight Committee, it was formed in twenty sixteen to ensure there is an independent review of expenditures for construction, repair, and modernization of our school sites throughout the elementary and middle school, high school dis, the elementary and middle school and high school districts respectively. Uh, we make sure funds are spent as the voters intend and that projects are completed wisely and efficiently. Um, so we meet quarterly, and we go over budgets and expenditures, all the fun stuff. And, um, at the start of each meeting, um, Bob and Tim have really organized, um, a way that we can see a school site at every meeting. So, you know, we've gone to Terlinda, seen that work, Santa Fe High, the new steam building. We had a meeting in one of the classrooms, which is really cool. And, um, we had to see the before of Davidson, which is not as exciting, but I think, um, it's good, good to see the rendering and see where it's going. Um, especially as a new Davidson. Uh, and during those meetings, you know, we review the expenditures and budgets. Tim, Bill, and Bob make a sincere effort to answer as many questions as we have, and they take care to follow up with answers they don't have. So when we come back, sometimes we even forget to ask the questions and they come back with answers. So we're really grateful for that. Um, we receive construction updates similar to what you just saw and for all active projects. And we get to preview some projects that have been approved by the board where, um, they're able to share those images. Um, in May, the community reviewed the report you have in front of you, the bond audits, or they reviewed the bond audits completed by Negro and Negro. And I'm here to report that based on the information provided, where SRCS is in compliance with the requirements of Article thirteen A, Section one B three of California Constitution. Um, I also just want to add that as parent of school age children and as a resident of Santa Fe, it's a really a source of pride and gratitude that we have, um, I drive by the site, someone on the site. So I think that's been shared by everyone here. Um, and it is like, I didn't think about it until we talked about it here, because it's, it's hard to think about everyone's role. But just to have the staff show up and show up for our students every day and feel pride in that, I think the students really bleed from that. And, um, it really enriches our community. So I'm really grateful for all the work that's been done and all the great work we're gonna see. And I'm mostly grateful that some of it's gonna be done by the time my kids, because my kids get to enjoy it. Um, any questions?
Um, thank you so much for your presentation and for being here today. Um, Trustees, do we have, uh, any questions for comments?
Thank you, uh, for giving us the information. I don't have any additional, any questions.
Great, yeah, thank you for the work you're doing too, it's so important. So thank you for being here. I have no questions for you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here, appreciated and awesome. So great to have parents involved, like, thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Great. All right. Anything else? Do we have to approve? No, we don't have, this is just information. Anything else? To the Oversight Committee, everyone who volunteers and does that work, because it's a work of a team. Uh, thank you. Now we are going to the discussion action part of our agenda. Uh, okay, I'm very interested in this. Um, approval of District Response two twenty three, twenty four, Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report. To learn or not to learn, our children with learning differences set up for success. What's in here?
So staff is going to present a response to this grand jury report. And to do that, we have our Directors of Special Education for the High School District.
Yes.
And our Director of Special Education for the Elementary District, Leam Boe. Thank you.
We don't have any sizzle reels tonight, so I approve.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, um, so good, uh, good, good evening, Board of Trustees. We're here to, um, provide a response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report titled, "To Learn or Not to Learn: Our Children with Learning Differences Set Up for Success." That's a very comprehensive look at special education throughout Marin County. You may already know that every school district, including the County Office of Marin, was asked to review this and provide their own response. So we had the opportunity to review our report, and we provided the responses to you ahead of time. And we're seeking approval to our, to our responses, so we can send on to courts.
Okay, perfect. So, um, just to, we're gonna give a high level, just kind of overview, and then you're welcome to ask us some questions that you have. So, um, really, the findings kind of fell into three main buckets. The first was around communication families, um, around the, the continuum of special education services, uh, the referral process and parent rights. The second, um, was around special education service tracking and really for the purpose of how do we ensure that students are receiving services that they are, um, supposed to be getting through their IEPs? And then the third was, um, one finding around instructional methods for students with special needs, specifically the teach model. Um, so we, you'll see in the report, the responses that the district had to those items. And then the report also provided all the districts within Marin with four recommendations. And you'll also see, um, the district's response to those. And just in summary, we are implementing three of those. The fourth recommendation was really, um, for MCOE to be monitoring compliance data. And they came back and said, basically, that is something that the CDE oversees, and so we're not implementing that. Um, so again, just kind of a high-level summary. Um, do you have any questions for us?
Um, Trustee, so I just wanna, can you give us a little background of why we would have to respond to the Marin jury? That would be great.
Yeah, so the, the Marin jury is a, I guess they, they're called like a watchdog group. And so they study already of issues in the community, and then they put together a panel, interview members of the community, and they come up with a report. And so part of, um, includes the Penal Code and the Brown Act, is we have to come upon the governing board, present the findings, and discuss our rationale, um, for, for our responses, whether we agree, partially agree, or disagree.
Thank you for that. I just want to make sure everyone had the background on this. Um, Trustee Kerner or Trustee Martin, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything else additional right now.
Were the findings surprise or not a surprise, or what was your reflection to kind of those four headlines that you shared with us?
It wasn't a surprise. I think that there, some of the findings, and you'll see in our responses, that we partially agree with a lot of it. So there's truth in many of the findings they had, and then there's also kind of the district's perspective and what we're doing to ensure that our families are being communicated with, that they're aware of their rights. And we do, our staff works so hard to communicate to families and to make sure that they're informed. And so these are big issues that I think every district deals with, our communication families. But, um, so I wasn't surprised to see those. Um, in terms of compliance monitoring, I also wasn't surprised to see that the CDE has started in the last two years, um, doing a compliance data check for provision of I, or IEP implementation. So ensuring that we're implementing services appropriately, that students are receiving their IEP services. So that's kind of the thing that the state is looking at. So it wasn't surprising to see it kind of coming to this typing report.
Yeah, and I just, you know, there's a, an emphasis on how, right? So is, are you tracking the services that you should be implementing, and how are you doing that? Was a shock to see that, because that's an important question, um, that, that comes up, um, throughout the county, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that, um, my only pieces, as our Superintendent knows, I'm very interested in special education and tracking. It's, I think, just like our campaign about, um, attendance awareness. I think it's so important for parents to understand their rights to their children when they want an IP or what services they have. So I think it's, it's such a puzzle, right? And it's confusing. And so I think that it's really important, because a lot of our students that do need help don't know exactly, are their parents. So, um, thank you for this.
I often share with parents, uh, who reach out to me asking questions, like, it's like learning another language.
Yes.
Ask all the questions, ask them more than once, because it's complicated. And you're not gonna know them as you ask, and so it's, um, it's kind of written like that.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so this, the Marin jury, uh, look, uh, they also looked, uh, the grand jury also looked at all the school districts, right? They also looked, so it was not just San Rafael.
Yeah, 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 that's all that you should know, and the problem. On seventeen districts and like that.
Yeah, so it was not just, uh, something that they did in San Rafael, but looked at all the districts. Um, so I, I, I wonder, what are the next steps after this? So do you have a comprehensive plan that you plan to present to the board, highlighting some things around special education that is consistent to some of these responses? Like, for example, if you're implementing new tracking system, is that something you're planning to present to the board at some point? Or some of the steps that you're taking potentially?
Certainly, yeah, yeah, we can certainly do a special overview and include tracking of services.
Yeah.
The, uh, if you read through the report, there's, uh, the Special Education Information System, ACE is what it's called.
Yeah.
They have a, a feature in that, um, program that does tracking for. So it's not anything new, it's just educating our staff members how to use it and letting them know it's there to use.
Oh, so we have been using this system for a while?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of many that we have. And last year, we started using Paradigm really for medical billing, but it also has an embedded service tracker. So all of our specialists are using Paradigm, and they're required to do that, which helps us track their services.
I think this goes back to what we were going to present, the ecosystem, our multi-year systems of work in general ed and special ed, and how we do track using Ion.
Yes.
So to speak.
Just like a hundred different states.
There's a lot, there's a lot. So we want to break it down for the trustees and provide that information, so.
Yeah, as we break it down, I'm hoping that we can think about, you know, hopefully there's also opportunities for simplification if necessary. I'm sure that for a special ed is one thing, that for other, for general ed, but, you know, we, we will have that discussion when you bring those systems. I'm a little bit worried when we have way too many systems, and then the adoption of those too many systems, sometimes it's hard. So I'm always concerned about that from a management perspective. Um, the other thing is that I, at some point brought to the attention, you know, a year or two ago, um, our website and how it would be nice to have some sort of flow chart or some sort of something, right? That maybe, uh, we can work with Christina, in which we very quickly can put a two-pager, in which we tell parents, this is, this is how the, uh, special ed works. Like, you start here, and these are the options. I think it would be very helpful to do that, uh, when they identify what happened on the website. Yes, I brought up this up before, and I'm glad it's being addressed.
That's one of the, that's one of the things, what we said, okay, if there's anything we can really take from this, is we really do, we can do some work on that, so.
Yes, and I appreciate it.
We definitely have that exact flow chart that you described. We have that in English and Spanish, our, uh, our Self-Appointed Community Committee together.
That's great, oh.
Created that, so it'll just be a matter of putting that on our website rather than linking to the self-website, so.
Yeah, something simple to be able to, try to be taken to it for you.
Right, exactly.
Honestly, it can't, so, uh, use whatever tools you have at your disposal to get that information out there. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. This is great, congratulations. And so I do need a motion to approve this, so that our wonderful team can then respond to the grand jury.
I motion that we approve.
You moved the motion.
Yes, I moved that we approve.
I second the motion.
The, the grand jury report, okay. So to move, move by, uh, Vice President Martin, second by Trustee Kerner, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, that item passes, thank you very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Great work, everyone. All right, approval of, uh, memorandum of understanding between San Rafael City Schools and the Gymnastics Bus at the Early Learning Center. I present Stephanie.
Hello, Mrs. Boss. So this hopefully is one of the more fun ones we will see. Um, we have worked really hard, obviously, at the Early Learning Center, the community, you'll see it tomorrow. It's really, uh, beautiful, and seeing all of our littles there is really fun. Um, many schools also through their foundations have additions to the things we already offer, addition to art and library. Uh, and so we've been searching for kind of the right fit, um, for the Early Learning Center. So we already will have art there, we'll have music there, um, through our partnerships. But this was an ad we wanted to do in order to kind of add that community and that special, something different. Um, if you're not familiar with the Gymnastics Bus, they are in Marin County. It is literally a gymnastics bus, a big yellow bus, they, uh, take
It says gymnastics on it.
It says gymnastics, it is a wonderful program. They take about twelve kids on at a time, and so each student will have a series of six over the course of six weeks. Um, and this fits in really nicely with our, uh, preschool, transitional, kindergarten, California foundational stand, I can't remember. But the new, the new version, the Preschool Learning Foundation, it aligns with that. And so we are asking for, um, approval tonight, uh, so that we can actually get this started, um, the day of the next board meeting. But we'd love to get it started that day if possible.
Uh, Trustees, comments, appreciations?
Um, how, how do they do gymnastics on this? I've seen, I've seen this bus, like, I'm, but I'm, but I'm, but I'm, but I'm not, but I'm not seeing the inside of the bus. It seems super fun, like, I, like.
Yeah, so what I've seen in there, it's been a few years since I've seen it. Um, but last I saw it, there was like a little tumbling, I mean, a tumbling area. It's little, but there's like a little tumbling area, and they had parallel bars and or uneven bars. Um, you know, a version of the, the vault table that's like very, very little, and then like springboards and, and trampolines and stuff. Um, and it may have shifted since I last saw it.
Does this, sorry, expand outside of the bus too, or do they really keep everything inside?
He keeps everything inside, so that's why it's only half the class at the time, is that they all, you know.
Oh.
Um, it, the kids love it.
Yeah, I wanted to go in the bus when I saw that.
It'll be there, uh, one day a week for a while.
All right.
Uh, but as you can see, I mean, there's just a lot of like gross motor that happens within here, along with following directions and regulating my space and, and things like that. Yeah, so.
Oh, super cute, I love it.
No other questions?
Trustee Martin, any questions?
Please do.
No, that's a good question, I'm, I'm, I'll do the photos.
No, I, I think we have to approve.
All right, so do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding?
Motion to approve.
Okay, move by Trustee Kerner, second by Trustee, by Vice President Martin, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, that motion passes, great work, thank you so much. Thank you, Stephanie. All right. Resolution, um, we're gonna discuss resolution two four two five seven of intention of the Board of Education, uh, to convey a reconfigure easement to San Rafael Sanitation District for sanitary sewer pumping facilities at San Rafael High School. Um, is intention to accept the, the, uh, claim, the, this is Mr. Mercucci, please.
Um, I know we saved the sewer talk for last, but, um, so
Have to sign that, yeah.
The Marin Sanitation District has an current easement on the Santa Fe High School campus, where they have a pump station and, uh, other, uh, machinery or, or equipment there. Um, they are and have been looking to improve the pump station. We're very much in support of them improving that pump station, I won't get into that. Um, and in order to do that, they need to enlarge their current easement, um, uh, uh, to, uh, you know, from, say forty square feet to like sixty square feet.
I see.
So, um, we have checked with our Director of Maintenance and Operations to make sure that that easement is not going to be in the way of, of any, you know, school programs or, or other, uh, operations. We've checked with our, um, Director of Capital Facilities, uh, uh, who has assured us that it won't, that easement won't be in the way of any future projects. It will be in the way of the, uh, Christmas tree lot that happens at San Rafael High School there.
Oh, that's right.
So it's a good thing, and it requires a, you know, what we're doing tonight is essentially closing the current easement and then establishing a resolution with the intent to approve, uh, or review a new easement, which at the next board meeting would be up for the board's approval.
Yeah, all right.
Where is it?
It is between the football field scoreboard and, uh, San Pedro, right, right along the street there.
Yes, I know exactly, exactly.
There's a little cage around it.
Yes.
Okay, I know exactly. Perfect, so we can work on the, on those stores, right? So we can actually have access.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so that we can upgrade and update that equipment, which, um, may contribute to, um, you know, issues that are, that happen in that area. So we're excited about the, um,
That's great.
opportunities.
Of course. Trustee Kerner, do you have any other questions, or can I, um, can I ask for a motion?
No other questions.
Okay, so motion to approve the resolution two four two five seven. I'm so moved, uh, so move, I move by Trustee, Vice President Martin, uh, second by Trustee Kerner, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, that motion passes, thank you. Um, all right, I think we, I can't believe it, actually.
Oh, my gosh, it's like the lights still on.
This is wonderful, I know, uh, do we have anything else? No, we don't. That's it, wow, I can't believe it, so thank you very much.
I do not think it will be.
No, we're gonna go to call session. Oh, no, we don't, no, are we? We are.
I don't have to.
No, 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 we were thinking about it, right?